Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the October ninth, two thousand twenty-five Board of Selectmen meeting. And as always, we will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in physical liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yes. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you all. Not too much on the updates, but what I have, I'll get started with. I just want to thank the Rank Task Force again for putting on a public hearing last night, and Chairman DeChamps has done a terrific job with it. Those task forces can be difficult. Sometimes you get some really good feedback and from sometimes people who have had a lot of a history with the town and institutional knowledge, and then also sometimes you just get the naysayers who just want to say no and obstruct all the time. And it takes a lot of patience, and I admire both Chairman Matt DeChamps and everyone on that task force for handling it really well and for making a lot of progress on finally getting us a new rank. So I want to thank him, and hopefully we'll see him in a little while. Tonight, I want to congratulate Sue Botson, who is the recipient of our friend, the late Dave Theis, his award up at Tamarack for the Glenville Volunteer Fire Department. Dave was a great guy, served three terms as a selectman, but everybody knew Dave, and he just was the nicest guy in the world, and we certainly still miss him eleven years after his tragic passing. Saturday is homecoming for GHS, so we want to wish the Cardinals luck. The Ableist Walk twentieth anniversary is this Sunday at, I believe it's eleven o'clock, right?
The walk is. The run starts earlier.
Nine. You doing the run?
No. I'm happy doing the walk.
Walk is healthier. On the thirteenth, we have the raising of the Italian flag, Columbus Day, and this year, the honoree at St. Lawrence will be Vin Dafina, who's just a great guy, has served in many capacities in town. We want to congratulate Vin. And then later that night, there'll be a dinner at the St. Lawrence Club, and also Fili de Rose, which is the Sons of Roses, also having a Columbus Day event in Glenville at the Polish Club. It starts about five o'clock. On the fourteenth, we're doing a proclamation for Coffee for Good. I don't have a time for that. I think it's-
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock. Thank you.
It's for two, it's for, it's for Awareness Month and Blindness Awareness Day.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so two o'clock over at Coffee for Good, wonderful place there. On the sixteenth, we have the Commission on Aging's fiftieth anniversary. We have ribbon cutting on that same day for Kaya Yoga. And then that night, these are almost all at the same time, Waste Free Greenwich is having an event at St. Catherine, so that's going to be a crazy night, but we'll try to get to all of them. On the eighteenth, Lauren and I will be going to our forty-fifth reunion. That's crazy to think of that. So looking forward to seeing some people we haven't seen in a long time. On the twenty-second, I'm going to give the State of the Town address over at the Water Club at nine o'clock, so all are welcome. I don't know if there's any tickets left. I thought there was a few left, but it's always fun to update everyone and then take questions and here get some feedback from our business community. And Duvali's having their celebration and proclamation on the twenty-first. And just a quick reminder, two things. As we enter the last three and a half weeks before the election day, I got a call from one of the newspapers up the line, and they were doing this story on signs, and I guess, you know, every town has issues with signs and stealing signs. I told her that we would put something in, just a reminder of people to, if you think a sign is obstructing a sightline on public property, certainly call it in, do not touch it yourself. Just be respectful of that. We're going to try and keep all our signs, our campaign on private property to avoid that, but obviously, we can't control everything. But we do ask people to be respectful. And again, if you see something that's obstructing a sightline or something they think is questionable, just call it in. Just don't get yourself into any trouble. And then also, we're going to get something in the Community Connections tomorrow about alternatives to blowing the leaves and having them collected by the town. There's some things you can do, composting, that's really healthy and good for your lawn and your future gardens. So we received something from the Conservation Commission, so we're looking forward to getting that in there and continuing to move the ball down the field on all things environmental. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lauren.
Thanks, Fred. Good morning, everybody. Yeah, a few weeks left before Election Day, so thanks for all the updates, and I'm surprised I knew the time of something, because I don't usually, I'm not as usually, oh, I don't even know what the word is. It's not something that I'm always thinking about. Anyway, I do want to say that we've got a couple more interviews today for the Riverside Elementary School Building Committee, so I think we're going to be really close to at least getting some nominations started to get that building committee formed. There would be nine voting members, two of which are assigned by the BET and Board of Education, so we nominate up to seven members. So I think we're going to be in good shape after today. So that's my update.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning, and thank you for that. I think you covered it very well, and thank you for giving a plug to Leaving the Leaves. That will make our lawns happy. I'll just say that fall is clearly in the air. There are a lot of fall festivals. As the liaison to the Old Greenwich School Building Committee, I want to make a plug for Pumpkin Patch, which is on Saturday, October eighteenth. On Sunday is the Greenwich Land Trust's Go Wild from two to five-thirty at the Polo Field. You've covered Duvali, but also that night, the YW has its candlelight vigil against domestic violence, and this year, the vigil will honor Demetria Nelson, our Commissioner of Human Services, for all that she does for our town.
What date on that?
That's the twenty-first. The vigil starts at six-thirty. It's often in the front of the YW, but this year, because of construction, I believe it's going to be in the back.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad they're honoring Demetria, does a terrific job here. Okay, thank you. All right, going on to old business, there is none. So new business, we have Deputy Chief Jim Bonney here for the first of a few. First one up is an amendment to traffic ordinance Schedule X or ten residential parking permit, two thousand twenty-five to dash zero-zero-six. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Today, we have, I'm bringing two issues forth that are basically housekeeping issues, kind of oversights in the past that we just want to fix. I'm requesting that it's a single read, and we don't have to come back again on this, because it's really, but I'll let you know what it is, and you guys make the decision. The first one is Arcadia Road. There is residential parking permits signage down there, and it's, the way it reads is permit parking only between the hours of seven a.m. and ten p.m. It should be seven a.m. and ten a.m. So the signs say seven to ten a.m., but the ordinance somehow says seven to ten p.m., which is a mistake.
Gotcha.
So all the other residential permits signs in the entire town are seven to ten a.m. None of them, if you're going to, you know, obviously, you can't just not have any parking at all, so that's just a mistake. We're trying to fix it.
Good catch, whoever caught it.
Well, we have Parking Services on point all the time.
Good, thank you.
So that's all that we're requesting is that we change the p.m. to an a.m. in the town ordinances.
That's easy enough. That's not that controversial.
That's it. That's number one.
Okay, well, we'll take a vote on this, and then we'll-
So when you catch an error like this, do you just like do a quick search, like any other things that might be off?
Well, you know, you'll find that we have, we're trying to straighten out some of the omissions and errors that have been made in the past, and you could tell from my second thing that there's some things that have been going on for a long time that we just, no one ever really bothered looking it up. So we're trying to fix things as we go along, you know. I have two other things in the works that we're asking for public comment on and sending notifications to the residents on about parking on Steamboat Road and different places like that, which are also in violation. I mean, there's ordinances in effect on Steamboat Road that were there when Moneros were there, and Moneros isn't there anymore, so we're trying to update things, but-
Sadly.
It's a, I know, I miss that place, yeah.
We all.
Yeah, I miss it. I think that's where I met you, Fred, the first time, yes. At Moneros. It's true.
I'm just curious, I mean, this is almost like a Scrivener's era. I'm just wondering, like, is this something that A.I. could help with, you know, like?
Possibly. I'll be coming next time with five hundred changes, so, no, I don't know, you're right.
It depends on what you're, what A.I. tool that you're using, because-
A.I. could do just about anything but cook right now. I mean, so it's amazing.
You know, so basically, we operate-
But it does give hallucinations, so be careful.
Yeah.
Clearly, a person would have to, you know, take a look, but I'm just wondering, because you go through these codes and the charter, and yes, I actually have, but-
Not surprising.
At some point, you know, at some point, you can't, you can't pick it up anymore.
Well, I mean, a lot of them, you need to actually be out there to look at, you know. We have some things that are like, you know, no parking one hundred and sixty-nine feet to one hundred and eighty-two feet from this intersection, and there's no way you're going to sit in an office and figure that out, like if that's right or wrong. And you could bring up Google Maps and everything else, but unless you're out there measuring things and walking stuff off, you're not going to catch it, so.
On that side?
Yeah.
I'm just talking about on the-
Well, you're just talking about-
On the paper side.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's like the detailed stuff, yeah, because I mean, again, I think the old blue laws in Connecticut, we have laws on the book that you'd be shocked that they're still on the books. That's, every once in a while, in the legislature, you'd get it to clean it up, but the language in a state law sometimes dated back a couple hundred years, and it really didn't apply anymore, and we, no one just, no one ever bothered to fix it. So we would do that periodically, so maybe A.I. could help it.
Right. So currently, when issues arise, then we fix it, you know, or if we get notified of a problem, then we go ahead and fix it. But having just moved the operation to the Police Department, and we're getting audited, and we got a lot on the books right now, so our people are working very hard at a bunch of different jobs, and we'll eventually get to most of, or fix a lot of the errors that we find.
Yeah, no, we appreciate it, because it's helpful.
All right, so, wait, so did you cover?
Only one.
Are we going to take one at a time?
Okay, one at a time, okay.
So Lauren Raven, I move that we approve the amendment to traffic ordinance Schedule X residential park, residential permit parking PSP, hashtag two thousand twenty-five dash zero-zero-six.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thanks. And then going on to the second one?
Schedule thirteen.
Schedule thirteen amendment to-
Reserve parking. So as many of you probably know, there's a farmer's market down at the Horse Neck Lot, and there are signs that we place up there about keeping people from parking there so that they could set up the, set up the market. None of those are in the code, so we want to add that. So I don't know how many years that's been going on, but that's not even in the town ordinances. So we want to add that zone and make it reserve parking for Saturdays from seven-thirty to one-thirty for Farmer's Market.
And how many spaces, Chief?
How many what?
How many spaces would that be? Not that it matters, because I know it's a Saturday.
There's a picture of it, I can't count, hold on a minute, I can tell you right now.
Maybe about forty?
They've been doing it, I just-
Right, I mean, it's-
It's that area there, yeah, it's about forty spots.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not changing the area that we utilize, but that-
Okay, so Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the amendment to traffic ordinance Schedule Roman numeral thirteen, reserve parking PSP, hashtag two thousand twenty-five dash zero-zero-five.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thanks, Chief. And I was away at a family wedding the other day in a town up north that's well-known, and they had a sustainability market, it was like a farmer's market, and they closed off a little alleyway, and I thought, well, that would be great in Greenwich just to do something that wouldn't affect, and there's like an alleyway over near where Bruce Park Sports used to be on East Dome, where, but there's some little businesses there, but that's small, but I was thinking if there's ever, you know, a chance to close off a little part of the town, you know, but yeah, I mean, this certainly works because it's right off-
I mean, this is nice, because they get to bring their trucks and unload their produce, and it's less of a owner's on the surrounding area.
It's very visible, it's like-
Yeah, they come off the highway, you see it.
It's probably, you know-
They all know where it is now, so it's been there so long.
The other one was quaint, and it was, it's a walking community, so that's why I kind of liked it, but yeah, you're right, this works for us.
Yeah.
Anyway, all right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and going on to the third thing under new business, and we have our friend Rich Fulton, who I believe is-
Joining us over Zoom. Rich, you should be good to go.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
We can, Rich. Good morning, pal.
Good, how are you?
Good to, good to sort of see you, and good to hear you.
Can you not, you can't see me?
I can't.
You know, you're not missing anything, that's fine.
We know your voice, so we know it's you.
There you go. Up late like you, I'm sure watching the Yankees finish off their season.
You didn't have to bring that up, but, and even the Rangers got off to a bad start the other night.
They're back at it tonight, so we'll see.
That's right.
But appreciate you guys seeing me, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Rich, and thank you for bringing this to us. Once again, this is something that is very, very looked forward to in the Old Greenwich community, and I think you get a lot more people from beyond the Old Greenwich community for this every year, so thank you for continuing to lead the effort along with several of the merchants there.
For sure, for sure. Yeah, so if anybody listening, and for the official record, it's a time of the year where we're asking for permission to close Sound Beach Avenue, part of West End and Arcadia to host our annual First Light Celebration, which is always the first Saturday in December, so December sixth. The event itself is from five to eight. We ask for an hour of closure beforehand at four to get set up, and then an hour afterwards to clean up and break down. We have a professional landscaping service that happens to be my brother's company that comes through and cleans the holiday Mardi Gras residual effects of a really good time, so we make sure the town is clean, and then, you know, have three hours of a great holiday stroll. Last year, we, for the first time, lit all the trees in town, and we're doing that again, so with the help of Icy France and Marcos Torino and our board and merchant members, we're in fundraising mode, so we'll have holiday lights turned on again in mid-November, and anybody interested in supporting that, go to ogmerchants.com, and there's a donate button there, but it was spectacular last year. And then Freddie, I know you were, you were there, we wished Willa Carpenteri well in her recovery and battle with leukemia, and she's rang the bell this year, which is very exciting that she is cancer-free. We'll have the Costco volunteers joining us again with their two antique trucks, giving rides. You know, Sound Beach Fire Department will host all kinds of fun on their apron, and that's always great, and have had conversations with our good friend Roger Dranth in Traffic, and with Chief Hevy about public safety and, you know, what our plan is for some tweaks to the safety again this year. So it's a, it's a great event that grows, but as it grows, we plan more, and we make sure that everyone is having a great time, but is also safe. So we're happy, happy with the cooperation that we get from all town departments to make sure that, that everything is as safe as can be.
Well, thank you for being so thorough, Rich, and great news about Willa, and thank your brother Tony for-
I sure will.
-volunteering his services, and also Sammy Bridge and everybody, the folks up at the nursery there for donating the Christmas tree.
Sure, sure.
Okay, no, it's, so, I mean, this isn't time-sensitive, but I don't know.
It's not controversial.
Not controversial, I mean-
Yeah, we do it year after year. It's a beloved tradition in Old Greenwich back in the day when my boys were scouts.
Look at Janet, look at Janet.
I always have to look at Janet first to wave a first read.
But also, but also, like, yeah, you're on a roll, no second reads today, awesome.
Well, not, again, this is First Light.
You're going to lose your nickname.
I am going to second read McWhiggin, but-
Janet first read McWhiggin.
But like I said, this was, you know, this was part of the McWhiggin tradition every, every December, when my boys were scouts, they helped close the road and their troop helped clean up, and yeah, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to miss it, so.
That is great. Well, thank you. So we'll, we'll-
I think that's the day I'm going to go see Radio City Music Hall, Rockettes, and the Christmas spectacular, a hundred-year anniversary.
Wow.
Yes. But maybe I'll get back in time. So I will make the motion that we request, we approve the request to temporarily close the road at Sound Beach Avenue for First Light two thousand twenty-five on December sixth.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Rich, thanks so much, pal.
That is great, I really appreciate it, and hope to see you guys all in December, if not sooner.
We will. Go Rangers.
All right, yeah, good stuff. All right, thanks, Fred, appreciate it.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay, bye-bye.
Take care. All right, we just have one more item, and the man of the hour walked in, Matt DeChamps, who's our Task Force Chair on the Hamill Rink, who we were talking about before, has done a terrific job with this, and really moved it, helping to move this in the right direction. So the floor is yours, Matt, good morning.
Good morning, and thanks for having me in, Fred, First Selectman Camillo. I appreciate the invitation. Ms. Raven, Selectwoman, thank you, and Janet Stone McWhiggin, our Select Person, thank you all in advance for your time today. I want to compliment the First Selectman first and foremost with the group that he's assembled for this work. Nine individuals who are deeply committed to getting this rink project completed, so you've done a great, great job of bringing together a number of different constituencies. We've all worked really well together. We've had somewhere north of twenty-some-odd meetings over the last several months, meeting at a weekly pace, which is pretty intense given it's volunteers, and in each meeting, we've had about ninety percent of the individuals or more at the meeting. And so it's been a terrific group effort, and really an example, I think, of how volunteers, in addition to the administration who's been outstanding, everybody on the administrative staff, your team has been great and very supportive.
I got a bunch of hats picked up, if you want to push those along.
Really working together as a group to advance this project, so it's been a great experience for me, and I've enjoyed chairing the group. I want to present to you a report, an update on where we are, where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. The Hamill Rink Task Force has made substantial progress between April and August two thousand twenty-five in its mission to independently evaluate and recommend a site for a new municipal ice rink in Greenwich. And Task Force work has been driven by rigorous site evaluation, extensive community and stakeholder engagement, and detailed facility discussions per our charge. The Hamill Rink Task Force establishes a structured, transparent process centered on the rink evaluation matrix and a project plan to guide its work and ensure alignment with the town's objectives per its charge, including reviewing the Plan of Conservation and Development, also known as the P O C D, ADA compliance, energy efficiency, and other considerations. In April, we finalized initial drafts for the rink project plan and the rink evaluation matrix. We conducted initial analysis of rink user data and financial factors, including the BET's conditioning of funding per site cost estimation. We met with the First Selectman, who reaffirmed the town's commitment to the new rink project. We engaged key user groups, including the Greenwich High School, Cardinal Youth Hockey, and Greenwich Skating Club, who stressed the critical need to minimize program disruption and voiced strong reservations about a temporary undersized rink. We also provided input on desired features, such as dedicated locker rooms, enhanced spectator viewing, and dining facilities. In May through June, we met with RTM Committee Chairs, Finance, Budget, Overview, Public Works, and Legislative and Rules, who all emphasized the need for transparency, clear cost estimations, and increased public input compared to the previous committee's process. We held two valuable public hearings on June fourth and last evening, October eighth, which reinforced key community themes: the importance of maintaining ice time, the desire for two sheets of ice, and the necessity of transparency and community involvement. We approved and published the revised rink evaluation matrix and project plan. We began in-depth review of sites already on the REM, the rink evaluation matrix, as well as several new public suggestions, and established a process for their initial review. The Task Force systematically evaluated a long list of potential sites, approximately thirty sites in total, leading to the elimination of numerous non-viable locations and a focus on a short list of finalists. July through August, we did site eliminated, we eliminated sites due to wetlands, open space, and shape constraints, the parcels behind North Street School and Indian Field Point Road being two. Sites eliminated due to drainage, green space concerns, and/or conflicts with the P O C D, specifically Pocket Parks and Open Space were the Cohen Eastern Greenwich Civic Center, Havermeier Field, Baldwin Park, and Cristiano Park. Holly Hill was also determined to be non-viable to the lack of suitable space and residential proximity. The two thousand twenty-one RFP conclusion that renovated, concluded, and we reviewed it, that renovating the existing Dorothy Hamill Rink was unsuitable, and that was reaffirmed by the committee. The remaining sites, we have three. Merlot Park consists of two possible configurations, one, the flip option, and the second, build-in-place. The second site is Island Beach Parking Lot and the third, Horse Neck. We deepened the review of the challenges, the opportunities, the building height allowances, and the physical site attributes, including town parking data for context. The Hamill Rink Task Force has also advanced discussions on the facility itself, focusing on features and sustainability. Facility features discussions included optimized sizing, a number of locker rooms, restroom requirements, pro-shop concession integration, and facility building square footage, acknowledging the need to adapt design based on the final site. The Task Force also toured the New Wings Arena in Stanford for operating and design insights, as well as to determine any availability. Sustainability, the Task Force is committed to an energy-efficient facility, and an EMAC representative has provided insights for potential geothermal and solar power at the various remaining sites, all of this consistent with our charge. I want to again compliment the First Selectman for making these important sustainability elements part of the initial work that we have been doing. The Hamill Rink Task Force is working to finalize site selection recommendations, and will hold a vote to present one or two sites to the Office of First Selectman. A critical step was recently completed, where the BET released conditions to fund a professional cost estimate and Phase One environmental impact study for the three locations currently under consideration. This is important information to inform our final site recommendations. The Task Force is prepared to finalize its comprehensive assessment and proceed with a recommendation that reflects both the rigorous evaluation and extensive community input, and we will provide an informal report to your office as soon as possible.
Matt, thank you so much. That is very thorough. You packed about fifty years of accumulated research into a really short time period, and then you actually added a lot more sites onto this, and you looked at so many different things that we would like to capture in a new building, including sustainability, and, you know, one thing that an ice rink does is lose a lot of energy, and that's one of those buildings, we were told, that, types of buildings that actually can recapture it. So that was the reason why, one of the, one of the many reasons why I thought that the build-in-place was probably the worst option, but I think you've really nailed it here. We're looking forward to the final recommendation and/or the, you know, choices for the town. As I've mentioned before, we do have a very, one very willing private foundation that would love to help us with this, and we have a few others that we think are very interested in also helping to defray the costs of this. And these rinks do get expensive by the year. Wes, Palm Beach Gardens just finally approved one after years and years and years of fighting over it. One that Wayne Gretzky was involved with. And their final price tag was 40 million, but I don't know exactly what went into it. But certainly, this is a huge step forward. And the reset button that we hoped would be, you know, realized here, you've accomplished that. You've got this right back on track. So again, you have the gratitude of thousands of people here. You and your eight colleagues just did a terrific job. So I don't know if my colleagues have any comments or questions.
I'm just going to echo the thanks.
Yeah, I'll say thank you too. And it's refreshing, you know, the, sort of the concrete analysis, the rubric, so to speak. I mean, it's something that we do too when we're evaluating multiple choices for like a single option. And I just want the public to understand that as well, because you already start to see stuff in the news and people with opinions and stuff. And just to reemphasize that this is thoroughly being vetted by multiple criteria that it has to meet, whether, you know, people agree or not.
I appreciate you saying that. And thank you for your support. I, I should also mention for the benefit of the public, I know the three of you know this, but, and we've stated this as often as we can in our rink task force meetings, but all of the information I mentioned in the report is available online. It's available on the town website. Everything I mentioned is there. It's challenging, as you point out, because people are busy and they have a lot of, you know, personal time constraints. And they try and follow what's happening. And they don't get all the information they need to be informed. It's, it's difficult. But we're doing everything we can, both online, through radio, through print, to make sure people understand the process that we're engaged in and that the information that they need to be informed is available to them publicly.
That is great. And maybe what we'll do is, we'll mention that in the Community Connections. And then when we get the final recommendation, we'll certainly do that also there. But we'll put that in there. So direct people to that town website. So rather than going to Facebook and getting the information,
Sounds like a good point.
which sometimes is not accurate.
Indeed.
But Matt, thanks again.
Thank you very much.
You've had a busy week. So thank you.
Back to audit. All right. Have a good day.
Take care. You too.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, that's terrific. That's a very nice presentation and something that we're all looking forward to. So that's great. Do we have any nominations?
No.
Okay, a very quick meeting. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor. Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Chief. And thank you, everybody behind the wall over there.